Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. It's Monday, May nineteenth. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Call the meeting to order looking for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Approval of minutes from May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the edit editing minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion second, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item one. Aggravia ag engineering services presentation. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let's please introduce yourselves and then we'll introduce ourselves.
So yeah, my name is Jacob Hagan.
And I'm Tyler Buehmann. We just just gonna hand out a map.
Thank you.
Contact info. This we just took this this picture from the county engineer's office showing like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might want to give him a copy of engineer.
We'll try to.
He's got the original.
Okay. Anyway, so yeah, we um.
Real quick, let's introduce ourselves.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, sir, Mark.
Mark McFrey, District Five Supervisor.
Gene Miners, Kilkenny Supervisor.
Scott Johnson Supervisor.
Stephanie Houseman.
Mike Anderson.
Courtney Pyer Auditor.
So uh yeah, we're drainage engineers. We um left our previous firm and started up Aggravia. Uh this is about three weeks ago, I think. So we've been doing this three weeks now. Um you have ten years' experience doing this. I have three. And uh we we just felt that there was a market for more of a uh more of a uh lower overhead. Smaller, more direct um access firm to do ag drainage. So. Uh as you can see in the super simple picture we passed out to you guys, um like Carroll County is something like seventy or eighty drainage districts. You know, sure varying levels of activity. Um our office is located in Perry, so. I don't know, that's roughly an hour hour from here or something like that. But we we'd love to do any work there is in Carroll County. It's close by to be kind of like our first inner circle of clientele that we'd really like to work with. So um. Yeah, I suppose maybe you can launch into a little bit of maybe our vision of how we want to do things a little. Yeah, so um. Yeah, I mean, we know there's a lot of not a lot of activity in Carroll County, but there is a part of your drainage districts there that they are now, most of them are a hundred hundred years old. They're undersized, most of them. So we think that there's a future there to fix these and there's a process to dish land or petition to do it. Uh we want to get ahead of issues before they become big issues. So especially when it comes to landowner issues. That's that seems to be the most difficult part of the drainage district. It's shepherding along so landowners don't feel like. Just got pushed on. So that's what we're gonna try to focus on when we think because we're a small firm and solely focused on this.
So we're lucky. We don't have a a full-time drainage engineer or a drainage clerk. And we have um actually on the agenda today um assessments for seven drains that we're gonna do this year, but. Um secondary roads is who does most of our engineering and um repairs and then charges them to the drainage districts. That's currently how it works.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Zach, you want to add anything?
No, it's. It's it's a really a, like you said, a repair process. Really improvement projects or or major projects in the. Since I've been here, I know there's been some, a couple of them in the past that they had had done, but but in general, it's been pretty much basically our kind of situation.
And we have open trench and um underground tile.
Yeah. Yes. So what would you guys do? Would you do a study kind of and if uh recommend which ones we need to fix or repair or make bigger or what what is your service? Yeah.
So yeah, what we would do is if the landowner wanted to do an improvement project, so let's say the tile is just beyond several repairs for Zach's office to handle. Lots of larger. Uh code requires an engineer to be hired, which you can use the in-house engineer, but maybe that would be beyond what he would want to do. For improvement project. So then we would go out, survey it, study it, write a report, make plans. See the whole project through through construction, through the landowner, public media, public area and things like that. Yeah, we we would for it would be for major projects.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, we'd be involved in for improvement projects. And we know drainage is good for for the farmers, for the county. We want to want to make the process as smooth and simple as possible and kind of um. Really uh really inform people a little a little bit more about how important it is for a lot of those grounds, especially the northeast side of Carroll County, because. You know, like we've run into a lot of times with absentee landowners or or. Situation like that where farmers aren't or or the the owners aren't living, you know, amongst it. They may not even where they're in a drainage district or know the importance of it, that kind of thing, so.
Ninety-nine percent of people don't even know what a county drain is. They see an assessment on their taxes and it's like, what is this for?
Right. Yep.
And I think today we're gonna only do seven assessments. It's what you're predicting, Zach. Is that right?
Yep.
And I think the last time we did a major drain repair or improvement was back there. Oh, that's been about ten fifteen years, probably before your time even. Okay, I'm dating myself. Uh but that was over by the airport over there. So.
That one oh two you did.
Yeah, one oh two, yeah. That's one I was thinking it was.
Yeah, and and we know um we know that it's an economic investment. We're not out here just doing work to do work. Uh we want to do it to help people make more money and so kind of, I mean, kind of in line with that. Uh I guess it's important to let you guys know our our rate for work is a flat a hundred dollars an hour per time spent. And that's inclusive of everything. There's no extra charges of mileage, equipment, anything like that. Um we have low overhead. You're looking at the whole company here. It's all we do. And so we could pass that savings along to the landowners. Feel free, you know, I mean, you can search around any other firms that do ag drainage and we're very confident that our rate will stack up. Very well. So.
We're fortunate. We're on high ground. So we got a north-south divide where part of it, the south half goes to the raccoon, the north goes to Lakeview and then. The east-west divide, Missouri versus Mississippi.
Sure, sure.
But Jean pointed out before the meeting. West of seventy-one, we only have one drainage district in the county.
Yeah, the southwest part of the county.
Yeah, sort of by itself. So, yeah, I guess it's kind of circle around um.
So are you related to the Bumans here?
Uh so I was talking to Greg Rice, who does crop intelligence for E four way out west, and he was telling me about the Bumans in in Carroll County. I'm sure I'm distantly related, but.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I'm from Shelby County originally, so I mean, there's a lot of humans over there too.
Barrett Hagan?
Yep, I'm there, yeah.
I think I met your dad and is he banker?
Yeah.
So does anybody have any more questions?
That's you, okay. All right, all right.
We'll keep your contact information. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck in your new endeavor.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, item number two, secondary roads. We have a utility, morning Zach, utility permit for a new chicken barn on two hundred and fortieth street, it looks like.
Yes, um. Western Power power need to get a. Uh power underneath the road, underneath two hundred and fortieth street uh to a new chicken barn. Um they are gonna bore that, like most of the services that are being put in. Um there's currently power there on the south side, so. Not a whole lot of uh. Not a whole lot of uh. Uh work to be done in the county right away. They're just getting that power across.
Board underneath it, three, three phase, I see.
What was that?
Three phase, I see.
Yes.
Now this would be more on Tom Carlson's acreage on the east side of it.
I guess any questions? I don't have anything, know anything more on that one.
You don't see this red flag or anything?
It's what Western, Western Power's.
On two hundred and fortieth and Delta.
So why don't why don't we ever put addresses on though?
That. I don't know why. Is this is gonna be new construction the way it looks?
I think, I mean, generally if sometimes they'll have the address for an existing acreage, but also it's, we always ask them for the township section range is what we're.
Is this going on the acreage?
It's just east of that, it's east of that acreage.
Okay, Washington Township, Range thirty-six, section ten.
This is a name on abstract.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the. That's. Um.
Okay, all right. Gotcha.
I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for utility permit on two hundred and fortieth. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Be approved fiscal year twenty-six drainage assessments. It looks like there's seven drains. That you're looking or that we are looking. That's correct?
Correct. Um most of these are ones that we work that's been done um. Last summer, that last fall, a little bit this spring. There's a couple of them that were um estimating some. Um work to be done on. One we one we know for sure will be able to refusing holes to fix. And another one that we're uh need to investigate and more than likely we'll have some repairs we need done as well. So that's kind of where. Where those dollars came from. Um and then essentially. Uh us putting put it together, the proposed assessment based on the those dollars and. Keeping a very small balance.
So you some of these, like there's some here a balance of four dollars six, you you look at past history too then, right?
I try to. I mean, if there's something that I know we've we we generally have had more repairs and we'll try to plan for at least well, at least one repair, right?
So fortunately, basically what we're doing is secondary roads being up front, the front man for the projects.
Most time, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, now it's the drain twenty-eight, thirty-eight, forty-six, forty-eight. Sixty, sixty-seven and ninety are the seven drains that. He's looking. Or that we are looking at, I guess. I don't have any more questions. They're all small, very small amounts.
There's no other, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve drainage assessment for the seven brains named before. All in favor? Aye, I oppose. Motion carries. Um. Project updates and there's probably a bunch of these.
Uh starting off with our uh HMA asphalt project, um Dedham and Manning are both complete from a from an asphalt standpoint. Uh Dedham, we did get the granular shoulders put on uh late last week or mid from middle week on. So that is complete. Um we're still waiting for uh pavement markings and rumble strips on that road as well as pavement markings and rumble strips. Uh down by Manning. Uh we have a little bit of work to do on the on the ma- on the Manning job to pull the. Um the material that was milled out on the sho- from the shoulders back up next to the the paved shoulder. Um obviously with this little bit of rain, we'll probably be holding off now until it get it to dry up a little bit, but uh. I believe they did get kind of driveway intersections kind of. White rock hauled down in and put back put back together last Friday. So. Making a lot of progress there.
So will the markings come when all of them are done?
They'll have them come in and do them all at once. We have.
Right now it's gonna be unmarked.
We have no centerline signs that that we put up, um you know, by by our code, we don't have to have pavement markings, believe it or not.
Wow.
But uh. But uh we have those centerline signs, no centerline signs up and as soon as they get all the projects done, I'm sure they'll be in um relatively quickly after that to. Get taken care of, so.
See, a good start on the Litterdale Road. I drove on that yesterday.
Yep, there're a couple of days in on that, on the intermediate layer there, so. Um they decided to change gears and do that one before Mount Carmel for whatever reason. I'm not sure why, but that's what they the path they wanted to go, so. That's where.
Working from south to north.
That's where they're at, so. But uh going well, just kind of now playing the weather game. I doubt they're gonna go today with kind of the. The rain we've had in the forecast for potential for for more, so I'm guessing the next couple of days might be a little touch and go, but. Looks like later in the week it's gonna dry off again, so.
Anything more on the seventy-one project when they're starting that?
Uh I haven't heard anymore. I mean, it was last I heard was kind of late May, early June. Um I haven't heard anything else from them at this point, so. Uh next is the the bridge. They get all the pile driven um south of Ralston on that bridge. They're actually got the abutments formed up and they're pouring those this morning. So I'm moving right along on that. Couple other.
No issues with detours or dust or anything that you've heard of?
Not that I've heard of. Um we did put some some dust control down on acreages um on east and west of the. Of the project. Um so far, so good. Haven't heard anything. Um hopefully people are finding a better way around, but uh. Hopefully this keeps moving and we get it done here later in the summer. As far as other small projects that we were working on, um we did have someone come in last week and recut some rumble strip panels. We went and evaluated all and throughout the county. Uh. And we've, there's a few places where we didn't have rumble strip panels that we cut new ones in. Um in old older pavement, the pavement's been there.
They only do that on asphalt or do they do it concrete?
They do, they do that concrete as well. It's a lot tougher on concrete. It's harder to do on concrete, but they can still cut those in as well. Uh we had one row, once one leg of an intersection was concrete that we ground into.
Where were the new ones? What locations?
Um so south of Glidden and going towards Kid Rapids that where the curves used to be there.
Yeah.
Where where they straighten those out, those never had rumble strip panels, so we. On those three legs or the, I guess, the the two legs on the one intersection, three legs, two legs on the other, three legs on the other one. We put new panels in there, so there's fifteen new panels in those those five legs. And then recut oh approximately thirty more uh just under that, I believe, other places, so. Um trying to freshen up and and get get that full depth back, know that that they need to be back back there again, so.
Making them louder.
Hopefully, um. So they did get that completed. I think they got that done last Thursday, I believe. And then we're also working on our HMA patching. We got to various locations in the county complete. We're still. Probably would have get would have gotten it late Friday night, but uh the rain uh caught us or the. Threat of rain, I guess, caught us Friday afternoon, so. Um whenever they fire the plant back up again for our main project, they'll. Start going again and get ours, rest of ours knocked out, so. But. That's kind of what we have going on.
Do they have any more questions for Zach?
Auction. Hmm, auction.
I think that closes on Thursday, I believe, so.
So that's.
Twenty-second, I believe.
I see so much stuff with probably bedroaches all the course.
That's the chance that you take.
I know.
We'll we'll see, we'll see if anything changes here towards the end.
And sometimes I I've watched it once all.
Sometimes.
Sometimes they change fast, I mean.
And and the other thing we do, it's not. Prime equipment that we're getting rid of and stuff that's worn out and tired and and.
Or unused for several years.
Part part of the demon, so.
Uh. Couple things. So I did have another complaint and I did talk to Zach about the hundred and fiftieth and Noble. Someone um blowing that again and I want to make it clear that Zach, they did recut them. The rumble strips on there, so. And um. In front of Galings on a hundred or an Ivy, which is sixteen one ninety-seven Ivy, they just patched that. Um. And it's still, it still has a hump in it. I think they should look at that before they leave town because it's not gonna change, I don't think.
I I think it's a little better than what it was, but it's definitely not the way it was intended to be.
Yeah.
Uh.
Like between one sixtieth and one seventieth?
Yes.
Yep.
There there was always a. Is it like, I don't know, called sinkhole underneath that or something?
Color is from a Culver depression there.
Yep.
Really, I mean, it was pretty significant.
And this this North Main River.
North Main River, go on southbound. And there's a, they patched it, but it still, they didn't either put enough asphalt or something because it still has a. Which which is. It's better what it was, but I think it's gonna do the same thing if they don't bring that up a little bit, but.
I don't know.
Engineer, so.
I don't know if it's, it might be done settling, but it won't get better. It might not get worse, but it won't get better. I mean, it wasn't the intent to leave a bump, so. Um I I had one conversation with with ten pointer ready about that one, because I noticed it. Uh we'll see if we can get that addressed.
Yeah. One thing about the one fifteenth noble, buddy brought that up, so I blew that again, but when we went to out of town this weekend, I noticed. You've, I know you've probably explained this to everyone. We're talking about putting a flashing, just a flashing light on that thing?
We we can't put a flashing light on top of it. It's a matter of what, I mean.
I'm just just a thought. I don't know what you guys. We we don't, I don't understand what's happening. There's a, there's rumble strips, there's a stop ahead of sign and a stop sign. But it keeps happening. Taking something described that that's gonna flash just. I I I agree that we don't know what to do or well, obviously. I'm just trying to think if somebody's blown that again. I mean, we need to do something about that because you're gonna have another.
You can't. I think from the county's perspective, we've done everything we can. You can't make people not pay attention to driving. Distraught to driving is.
But I'm just saying, if you're distracted, you see a flashing light all of a sudden versus rumble trips, it might, it might. Yeah, I'm not saying. But you don't think it's a good idea, Zach? I mean, here are.
Last resort, that's the last tool in the tool bag. I guess you're trying to do all the options that we can.
No, I think you did a good job. I don't mean that.
And hope I was hoping that the the rumble, recut the rumble strips would help as well. I mean, to me that. That's it's a visual and a a a feel thing when you drive across those, right? It's not just a visual from a light, but obviously. Um it's not, it's still not, it's still not getting people's attention for whatever reason.
It's it's not the local people. It's Google Maps that takes you that route.
Uh that's what I'm wondering and I don't.
Well, it is. Can we Google how to get to Lynn Auburn? It takes you that way to take you through Carroll.
Yeah, and you think they get on there, it's just start rolling and they think that they're.
Set set the cruise and.
But you think the rumble strips are waking.
But you got some blanket eight or two. That that's my point.
Yeah.
Um.
A lot of those accidents have been daytime where you wonder if.
This was the day, this was daytime. I I mean, we potentially think they just cut the rumble strips within. Maybe right before they're after that.
Before that, potentially.
Potentially. Possibly. Yeah, and that's just a thought. I don't say we have to do.
We we can. I I guess we, I believe we have one of those flashing lights left. Um I, we just put one up here. On the the uh south side of Maple River, one of our LEDs.
Still be that, yes.
Uh. Wasn't working anymore, so I was trying to get to see if what whether they're gonna. Whether they're gonna last, whether they're gonna be the 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 right fix, and I I think they will be. Um and that's definitely something we can do is put a light up there. I just, you never know whether it's, whether it's gonna. Help the problem or not. I mean, there's really no good way to to tell that. I mean, that's. Kind of the last item to throw at it. I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah.
To to try to get people to realize that that's a stop condition. I mean, it's.
I'm just, it doesn't work.
Right out there.
My wide open.
My la- that last complaint was at one o'clock in the afternoon. So someone's blown it and one, one o'clock. Everyone's been a daytime deal, right?
Yeah.
I mean. At what point do we say, okay, let's put a stop sign on the east-west street on one fifty?
I know.
Totally unneeded with the car count.
Well, that's where if you look at the MUTCD.
Make it a four way.
Florence are for things, that's.
Well, then you're in a.
You're not, that's something you're not supposed to do is because you should. The the traffic on the east-west portion is the main thoroughfare and that's not the. That's.
East west.
That's not the the fix to to make that other stop condition happen. I mean, I.
Correct.
I I don't, and I don't, I'm not saying it's an enforcement thing either. It's it's sporadic, right? I mean, it's. I I don't know what it is.
What 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 is the cost of? Are are them stop signs, LED stop signs, are they solar?
It the.
Battery backup.
The LED LED stop signs and the flashing light above are both solar.
Okay.
The LED stop signs, I'm trying to remember what those were.
Four thousand bucks.
Just north of four thousand dollars or something, and I think, wow, the LED flashing light is a little less. I'm thinking more like. Seventeen, eighteen hundred maybe for that. But it's a, it's a perpetual thing too, right? I mean, uh those LED stop signs, we've had some of those that haven't lasted very long. I mean.
Oh, I know.
A couple of years. Then not only are you out messing with them every time, but you're it's. Getting them ordered in and getting, having me in stock to be able to replace them.
I I agree. I'm just thinking of flashing light. I'm not saying the whole sign has to flash, but I'm just thinking something on top that's gonna hopefully draw your attention. Have you ever, um, you know, s- uh one complaint was that the stop sign's too far off after they hit a rumble strip and the stop ahead sign, then the stop sign's too far off the road. Is that a situation or not there?
They, I think that's all been checked. I know this, the the rumble strips are in the correct locations because we we've checked those when we went, when we go through to. Recut them again. Um you know, there's different standards out there. The the actual new standard has gone to two panels instead of three.
Mm-hmm.
We've continued to use the three panel just because we think there gives more of a chance for people to. To notice them when there's three panels, and that's what people are, I guess, have been accustomed to.
More time to act.
So we've we've continued to use that and and there's nothing wrong with doing that. That's just, that's just, it's just the standards that DOT has come up with. Uh as far as the location of the stop sign, same thing. I mean, there's. There's dimensions of of where that needs to be and it's it's within within that range of where that stop sign should be. Um stop ahead sign, same way. I mean, uh. That, like I said, I mean, it. The side distance is good. There's no, it's not like there's trees at the intersection like that. There's no ill.
When there's a new building there too that you would have.
Now, yeah, there's, yeah. I don't know. I just have this, when I drove like this, they didn't stand out, stop sentence, that stick out like it should. I didn't think. That's my opinion. I just. I mean, rumble strips, everything was there and I was paying attention, but it just.
Well, they're evidently, they're not paying attention when they're down through there. They're 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 doing something else.
Yeah, but you know, the cell phone issue. Crazy.
Any more questions for Zach?
Nope. Thanks.
Alright.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
Item number three, approve retail tobacco license. Owl's Corner Company.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, I oppose.
Motion carries. Item four, approve twenty twenty-five tax suspension. Courtney, I think you have five properties. Maybe we added one and took one off from last year's.
There's five total. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five tax suspension list.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve five properties for the twenty twenty-five tax suspension list. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item number five, committee reports.
I can go. Last week I didn't have any official meetings. Um this week I have Wesco today. Then I'm gonna attend the Carroll County Roundtable in Manning and then on Friday I will have the Yes Center in Cherokee.
I I can go next. Um. Last week I had conservation meeting. Um. There wasn't a whole lot new there, but they had, they're getting quotes for uh their heat pumps are going out in there. Um geothermal. So, yeah, but it's been twenty years.
Yeah.
Yes. Which is, they're expensive.
How much is a pump?
Uh, new one was seventy-five, sixty and a used one, the repair, excuse me, repair one was three thousand one hundred twenty. I think they were gonna go.
Placing them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking of more replacement costs. Those weren't so bad to repair.
What was the replacement cost, Mike? Uh seventy-five hundred. Thirty-five better bucks, thirty-one hundred to repair, yeah, but they they have quite a few up there, I think. I could be wrong. Um. And then um one thing also was the the signage on the, they brought up the signage that they put in Maple River. And I think they do not want to. Put signage up everywhere on their license on private property. Is the new, I thought they were all for it. Um so. Otherwise, they thought there would be business signs everywhere along the trail, so.
Because to me, it looks like those are on the South Brawl Trail right away.
Yeah, if it's not, it's the railroad, so it's one of the two.
Because I saw um I saw Vanguard out there marking them and I thought it was awful close to the trail. Yeah.
Yeah, it looks nice, but um besides that, I had a conversation about a hundred fifty and Noble. Um. With a constituent and then I went to Maple, or we went to Mount Carmel, me and Scott did, and talked to another constituent about. Um vacate in an alley. And uh. Me and Zach went to Maple River and had roads conversation with our constituent. And then um this week I have Board of Health meeting on Tuesday and uh County Roundtable on Wednesday night in Manning. And that is it for me.
Newspaper and radio.
Newspaper and radio today too.
Done.
Done. Oh, you get it?
Last week, uh. On Monday at four o'clock, I did go to the assessor's vault for the board of review. That was interesting. I think there's twenty-eight people who were protesting their assessments. And also last Monday at five fifteen was Carroll City Council. Tuesday morning, Executive Board um meeting at the recycling center. And then Tuesday. And then Tuesday, finished up the board review and the assessors vault. Wednesday, I did make contact trying to get all thirteen um. Cities to come to the county roundtable, um contacted Dan Snyder, Mayor Brita and Jamie Handland, and they both acted like they were gonna give it a serious effort. Um. Tues- or Wednesday, also went out to secondary roads to look at the rough draft of the wall map that's gonna go behind Courtney, and that's coming along very nice. Then Mike and I met with uh Mount Carmel resident about a vacated property, um one of. Yeah, he wants to split it down the middle or maybe buy the other half from the neighbor and I, Courtney and I, we looked at that too. I'm not sure why that hasn't happened. Friday was the Court Avenue Apartments Chamber Coffee. I also talked to Zach for quite a while about the county drains and Maple River Roads. I did meet with uh ambulance trucker, web cure on Friday also at the ambulance station. This week, um today at eleven thirty is RSVP board meeting. Um tomorrow, Gene and I have CCGP board meeting. Wednesday, city county roundtable in Manning, which I think we're all going to. Thursday, I'll be out at secondary roads looking at claims. Friday, courthouse claims and also his merchants park. Um Chamber Coffee to show off all the new improvements that we helped pitch in on. That's all I have.
Okay, last week I did the radio and newspaper and I did talk to Mike Fisher, why things weren't in the paper, or Steve Fisher. Um Thursday, uh we had new opportunities board meeting. That was basically a regular board meeting. Uh we did amend the transportation waiver for Ed Start. Um approved the community service block grant of funding application for two thousand twenty-six. And did other regular items. Um then I attended the Chamber Coffee on Friday. Uh this week, and then I had a lot of the conversation with different people too, and I did drive the Manning Road a couple of times, all they were working on. Um Tuesday, I wish I wish I should back up. Uh I did get a comment from a resident of Willie and I did pass that on to Darren. Pass on the foreman. That uh this individual from Willie said that those truck drivers for. Norris are very respectful drivers. They did the root, the right things and they were very good. So I had stopped and made sure that he passed that on, so make note of that here too. Uh then, so this week, Tuesday, I have CCGP. Wednesday's a Carroll County Roundtable and I was supposed to go to Cherokee on Friday. Uh and I was gonna zoom in because I was gonna be out of town, but I also now have another funeral. Uh Friday, so Stephanie's gonna take over for me. I've only got three funerals this week. So.
Okay, that's it. I didn't have much going on last week, other than bugging Zach a little bit about what what was going on in county. Um this week, um I got a Carroll area childcare meeting tonight. Um took uh Wednesday, I've got an open meeting with Kurt Stiger and Maggie Polly, and then I was with Carroll County Roundtable on Wednesday. And you said the Chamber Coffee is at Merchants Park, Friday?
Friday.
I'll try and attend that also. I missed the last couple, so I found, it's all I have.
Any comments from those in attendance? Courtney, next Tuesday, not next Monday.
Next Tuesday, right now, it's just Bill Day.
Okay.
Tuesday, I would have been here on Monday if you didn't say that.
It's a holiday, you would not be here.
Motion to adjourn.
So, all right, we have motion and second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.